Good evening and welcome to the West Annika Central School District Board of Education meeting. Hope everybody's enjoying this beautiful weather. We have to be stuck inside tonight, but we have some great presentations, so we don't mind doing that. Could, Jody, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we're going to start out tonight with the capital improvement project updates and also the buildings and grounds. So if we could have representatives, I see there's quite a few of them from young and right here to get the big guns out tonight to give us some, you know, what's going on, what's been finished or almost finished and what's in the works. And then Joe Farr, our supervisor of buildings and superintendent of buildings and grounds, is also going to give us some updates. Okay, so if you want to come up to the mic.
I know we're all masked now, it's been a little bit of time since we've seen you and obviously, you know, it's been a long time since we've seen anybody face to face. So we really do appreciate the opportunity to come in and see everyone and put together a presentation. Christina is going to walk through some of the work that's in progress, projects that have either just recently been approved by SED or that are into SED along with our schedule for much of the remainder of the project. And Alan and Paul are going to show some photos here and of some of the improvements that have taken place already and some of the things that are in progress and what you can expect to see over the course of the next handful of months as the construction season is, well, for you guys, it really didn't stop. We, you know, they worked through the winter here, got a lot of the things out of the ground and ready for the summer work. And I think it'll help the schedule to, you know, which is always a challenge for contractors to get everything done over the short period of time that they have. So it's nice that they've had the opportunity to keep working through the winter and get a good grip on what's going to lie ahead for the summer, so.
So the first couple of slides, they don't have as pretty of pictures as what Paul and Alan will be talking about, but right now we have a capital outlay project that I believe the board just approved within the last couple of weeks. And we gave the notice of proceeding to contractors, so that work should be started soon. And that is the pool piping at West Middle. And then we're in the works with the district in developing the next capital outlay as well. Okay, the Smart Schools project, that's a little bit bigger one. That has to do with all the technology, upgrading all the data closets throughout the district and all the education buildings and the bus garage, adding additional wireless access points and upgrading the cabling for the phone system that you receive your internet through. So that is actually going out to bid this week. We should be receiving bids in late May and we're hoping to get that in front of the board on June 8th for that board meeting. So that should be forthcoming. And right now, construction is anticipated to be about a two-year period through 10 buildings. So we will be working closely with the district to make sure that any work that's being done in those buildings aren't disrupting any of your activities that are going on. And that should start in June of this year. Okay. Just some of our phasing schedules, so we know that the capital improvement project is a $75.5 million project. We split that into four phases so that we can keep the construction going on a phase schedule. Right now, we are in construction with Phase 1, so that's the stuff that you can see right now in the fields and Alan and Paul will go through that. Phase 2 is work at the middle schools. Right now, we have that into SED. We are currently working with SED to get through the addenda and get that approved by them. The majority of the project is going to bid in the fall for construction start next year, probably starting January. And we've also split out the East Middle roof so that we can actually have construction this year. So right now, it's in SED, we are just about to have approval, and we are looking to get that out to the contractors this week, but obviously, we can't award any bids until we have SED approval. But there are still interested contractors, which is good for this time of the year. Okay. So we're kind of at a point, I'll kind of give you an update on the roof because no one really needs to see roof pictures. But right now, we've finished roofing at Allendale Elementary. That was a recovering of anything of the original buildings. And we are just about into closeout, so that work is complete. And then we had a portion at West Elementary and a portion at West Middle as well. And those are also in the middle, just getting to final closeout. So contractors should be all set in those buildings. And the East Middle roof, which is in Phase 2, is going to be very similar to Allendale, same type of construction. If you are aware of any of the construction that went on there, it shouldn't be too disruptive. We'll make sure it's second shift and during the summer.
Can I ask a question? Are they rubber roofs? They look all white.
So West Elementary and West Middle were a PVC roof, which is a single ply membrane of rubber roof, that they just put a fluid applied on. And that's a restorative. We were able to get a 20-year warranty, 20 or 25, sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head. And they were able to keep the existing, except to save the district money, but still get them the warranty that they need. Allendale was a gravel roof and we were able to do a recovering where we put a little bit of insulation, some coverboard, and then the same fluid applied system. So all your roofs will have a very similar system. And that East Middle and West Middle will follow like Allendale's, they have the gravel roof.
Thank you.
Being white itself, too, is good, right? Like, that's super huge with reflecting, making heat not go right.
Yeah, absolutely.
And one more thing we did do with this roof is we put a field, just like a grit, attraction. So some of the rubber roofs are very slippery. We did put sand, like a gravel, a grit, so that it's safety, it's a little safer in those wet times.
What the restoration system allows you to do is to maintain and keep a lot of the good insulation that was still on the roof. So in a traditional roof tear off, you would tear all the insulation off, start from scratch. This allows you to save some of that, which saves you costs for the cost of removal. It saves putting good insulation into the landfill and the companies are still willing to go ahead and give you the warranty for the full 25-year period in order to put the coating system over the top of it. So it's become very, very popular amongst buildings like yours, the flat roofs.
Right, it almost seals it in with the clip, yeah.
Yep.
So with the Phase 1, I'm sure a lot of you have already been over to East Senior High School, currently active in use right now. So that has been substantially complete at the end of last, or the beginning of last school year. We're just going to follow up and do a few closeout items, punch list items, to close out East Senior. Oh, and with there as well, we also did the masonry restoration project, portion of the project and several doors. At West, obviously, we've started last fall, worked through the winter, got a great jump to the season. A lot of the underground retention system is in, it's actually, it's fully in. And currently, we're working on coming out of the ground. We have the light pole bases installed and we're looking to get a crane onsite May 14th to start seeing, you know, some of the big action items come out of the ground. So we'll have the light towers up, running tests that week, so I'm sure some people will start getting calls just because, you know, there'll be some new life to the site. Along with that, you know, no promises are being made yet, but we're looking to move up the schedule. We're working on the contractors to get the field complete, you know, maybe a little bit ahead of time, but we're still have limitations on what we can start earlier than possible. Do you want to talk about the?
So Phase 2 right now is in SED. So there hasn't been too much of an update on kind of our drawings and everything since our last board meeting and presentation in September. But we currently have scope that includes roof, masonry, exterior doors, intruder door hardware, exterior lighting, some of the Smart Schools data closet build outs, drinking fountains, and then some mechanical electrical upgrades. And then also at West Middle, as we had presented before, we have the music wing addition that we haven't really changed too much since we've met with the user groups. We just finalized the plan so that we can get it out for permit. And that includes a band room and chorus room addition with some practice rooms and renovation of the existing space for an designated orchestra space and a general music. We do have a couple of pictures of the renderings that we had showed the user groups there that was also shown last time. Also at West Middle, we are including a secure entry. That building does not have a secure entry currently. So identifying the entrance with a canopy and then renovating the main office space so that the circulation will accommodate secure entry. And then we do have a reconfiguration of the site also at West Middle, separating the bus loop from the parent drop off, from parent pickup, and making sure that pedestrians, all the students are safe and kind of staying away from buses if they're walking or being picked up by their parents. So we're introducing a new bus loop with two curb cuts, a separate parent drop off on the cafeteria side, and then parent pickup would be in the parking lot. And then we'll also add some additional parking spaces in that parking lot. East Middle, we're also looking to identify the main entry. Right now, it's kind of tucked in that corner. And kind of reconfigure the receiving and the main entrance area because right now, they're kind of all in that bus loop. Just make it a little more pedestrian friendly and kind of hide the receiving from your main entrance. And then both gyms, the main gym, getting a new floor and wall pads and a little sprucing up in the paint, some masonry restoration of the walls. And then for the small gym, just refinishing the floor and paint.
When this plan was designated, originally, the small gym was in use at East Middle. It is my understanding that it is now going to become office space or a teacher center at East Middle. Does that affect our SED? Does that affect our capital improvement because it's no longer going to be used for students?
It still is a gym, so we'll be sharing it. There'll be times, as we mentioned before, that we may want to use that for like scoring and things like that, but the majority of the time, it'll still be available as needed some.
I meant to answer that, anything we submit to SED, if we decide to put that as an alternate in the contract or we don't award that, we can still get it approved just in case. So it shouldn't affect our SED submission. And then at East Middle's site, we are, like I had mentioned, we're kind of reconfiguring that main entrance, adding visitor parking because right now, the parking is kind of farther out from the main entrance. And then continuing the connecting road, we did a portion of it during Phase 1, but finishing that connecting road between the two campuses, East Middle and East Senior, and kind of working on the drainage issues that you have there. Okay. And then just upcoming, we're going to be starting design of Phase 3, which are both high schools, that also, it's very similar scope roof. We already did the masonry, exterior doors, and then we're working with the science classrooms, art, music, and some of the miscellaneous mechanical electrical plumbing, drinking fountains, those kinds of things. And we will be reaching out to you and the group again, for user group setting it up the same way as we have in the past. And that is all we have. Any other questions?
I have a question. The East Senior punch list, are you addressing the rusting hardware on the features?
Yes. We scheduled to do that when they're back onsite, erecting the bleachers at West Senior.
And when you're specking out the wire, are you going copper core or copper clad aluminum?
It's copper core.
Okay. Great, okay. That's good.
Thank you.
I'll like that.
Any other questions?
And thanks whoever printed these out. Thank you.
Moving right along, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your work.
Thanks again for letting me in tonight and to see everyone again.
Thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Working through the paper copy, so this is why we keep papers still.
I was going to mention that, but I'm glad you did.
Joe, did you have anything additional to add to that or anything, the updates you wanted to be able to provide?
That's what we did.
That'd be great, thank you.
Our superintendent of buildings and grounds, Joe Farr.
What's the situation Pete was asking about?
Well, last time we were there on the visit, we saw, yeah, we saw just there was no galvanized, so.
Right. Is it just a case of switching out with a different type of?
Yeah, just bolts sliding in and out.
Bolts?
Bolts.
Bolts.
Yeah, the holes going up the stairs?
Yeah.
We thought that right away and decided instead of bringing them back out in the winter, we're going to do it when they're back erecting the bleachers at West Senior.
So at West Senior, are they?
Everything's going to be?
Doing the right ones, just like?
They must have right away.
Hi, everyone, just a few updates. Fire inspections, we did them in the last month, we, you know, through every building. Minor deficiencies, which are expected, they've all been corrected. It'll be filed with the state by the end of this week. That's one of the biggies. With COVID, you know, everyone's life took a turn and mine, you know, in this end of it. My people have been fantastic with clean and disinfecting. Every building's being cleaned and disinfected every day. And on top of that, we have electrostatic sprayers that we're getting through and, you know, rotating through and a couple of times a week, each building's completed. Personnel's problem, like it is anywhere in the world, okay? It just, that's my biggest hurdle right now and there is no quick fix for that. I don't know if there's a fix at all. The world's changing a little bit in a direction that a little squirrely, you can't get people to work. But other than that, my people are doing great. Anyone have any questions, any concerns about anything they see, what's going on?
I'd like to say everyone is doing an awesome job, being shorthanded.
Yep.
And we had, I had brought up at the last meeting about having conversations on trying to get creative about how we can get these positions filled. And I understand the outside world, what's going on with unemployment and stuff like that. But I still hope that conversations could keep going to come up with creative ways to get these positions filled, so.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, and then Dr. Savoni, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Operations, will show us what we have for staffing for the coming year.
I think you have a hard copy of this one, too. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you for having me here today, kind of for an update for you all. I will say, as we're kind of aggressively working through the staffing process, we have approached our plan for next year really with a few key priorities. And I think one is just trying to be fiscally responsible and mindful of, you know, future years, trying to ensure that we're meeting the goals set by this board, and I'll be able to speak to those, and also working with our administration. And obviously, meeting our students' needs at both, at every end of the spectrum, really. Those with the highest need and those enrichment opportunities. And then just being collaborative. We have evolved, since I'm here by myself, we have evolved to a point where we are working at extremely efficient collaborative manner across the district. And it is a huge benefit, I think, to all parties. So, you know, obviously, what are some general standards that we always, we want to make sure that we're adhering to our board guidelines when we look at class sizes and caseload of our teachers. I know a huge emphasis by this board was trying to find AIS opportunities and solidify and have consistent AIS opportunities for our students. Working collaboratively, having our principals, our curricular leaders, our directors, working alongside with me, our teacher leaders, our directors, excuse me, our department chairs and leaders. And just to maintain our comprehensive program, I think one thing that is certainly a proud emphasis of this district is the amount of opportunities. And I also know that ensuring that we have elective opportunities for our students is another thing that I have heard consistently from this group and from our community. So how do we go about this process? We take a look and analyze our enrollment. I was able to send you some documents and you'll see in this presentation, looking and analyzing our student need, building opportunities for administrators to come together and share and identify what their areas of concern are and their needs from their hearing from their teachers, bringing teachers and involving them in the process. We have teacher leaders by department and their voice and they're in there so to hear from them and the challenges that they are facing, as well as our administrative group, our cabinet and our directors. I did share in this slide what our current or the Board of Ed guidelines are. And I know we have worked towards trying to keep those within the guidelines and we are able to accomplish that, is what we are projecting. And that will be an area of focus as we move through the spring, summer, and through kindergarten registration as enrollment shifts, perhaps students come to us, that maybe we're at private or parochial schools, and certainly our kindergarten as that registration happens. That's a process that really goes on into September as we deal with our kindergarten registrations. I also offered kind of an April 16 snapshot, our, through Mrs. Fowler's office and our PPS office, monthly, we do a snapshot of our enrollment. And it's kind of maybe hard to read here, but it looks and breaks down what each of our grade level's at, where the changes we've seen since the last month's report. And then we use this to update our staffing sheets and then report back to principals and look at where our caseloads, where our class sizes at, et cetera. I offered a look at our current elementary enrollment at each building and what is our projected elementary class sizes for next year. So that enrollment number is the current year. And then as we roll those numbers up and we build sections, you can kind of see in the PowerPoint presentation on page 4, a look at where our class sizes projected for next year. So I think, as you can see, I think we have what I often refer to as competitive or well-balanced class sizes. I would say we are in the middle to, or average to low average, or middle to the low end within our guidelines. Few examples of some that are below the guidelines. So we have room built into our current section counts that allow for students perhaps transferring back into us or registering with us in several sections across the board. And then I know I emailed you kind of a little bit more detailed staffing sheet, the elementary that kind of offers a little bit more detail. So our process is we meet, we look at these things, we meet, I meet with the elementary principals. Ultimately, I will let them know what we can do from a staffing standpoint, and then they build their sections, and then they have an opportunity to shift teachers around, and then we start the transfer process. So we are right on the cusp of starting the transfer process for our elementary. We talked about our middle schools and our high schools. We have an all-day meeting tomorrow with our high school administrators, and we bring in department by department, the curricular leaders, the directors, the department chairs, and we go through and we look at caseload, we look at course offerings, we look at projected class sizes, what type of electives, whatever our AP numbers look like, and we filter through and make decisions on what courses will currently run, which maybe do, can we not run, et cetera. So that will go on tomorrow.
I'm sorry. The current numbers you have for the 2221, those on East Side are including your fifth graders, correct? So they'll go down approximately?
Correct, correct. It's about 200, yeah, so we'll be just like high 500s, I would predict, at East Elementary, excuse me, East Middle next year, with the fifth grade class coming down. East Middle School, yeah, those are the current numbers, you're absolutely right. The projected class sizes, as you can kind of see, Mary, you can kind of add up, you know, 171, 180, 213, it'll kind of give you a general sense of the enrollment at East Middle next year. But even in our middle schools, West Senior, West Middle, excuse me, has a pretty large class in their eighth grade. They'll certainly feel some relief next year in the building. As you can see, it kind of goes from 296 down to 252. The incoming, the fifth grade currently in what will be sixth grade or fourth, in two years, it's right around that 250, so there'll be some relief there out of West Middle. But their class sizes, based on current or projected staffing, I think are within the reasonable range in which we'd want them to be. And I met with our middle school teams yesterday. We have another meeting on Friday, and we'll continue to kind of look. We talked about our core grades, our core subject areas. Then we bring in our PE, health, our special areas, and we've been to go through each department and take a look at class offering, class sizes, et cetera. High school, projected class sizes in over the past four years, average class size of core areas has been within board guidelines. And, you know, a lot of factors drive the high school. It is certainly our, probably our most complex schedule. We have our academy programs, we have general elective offerings, we have just the size of the cohort coming through, and obviously, our special ed. We still, you know, we offer a wide array of special education opportunities for our students, ranging from functional, our 611, our 1211, as well as our 811 programming. And, you know, as you know, our philosophy and our approach is we want to create opportunities for our students in-house. So we're proud of that and we continue to do that. And looking at our enrollment, we expect our enrollment and our trends to stay pretty consistent. You'll see that high school projections for class sizes and grade levels are fairly stable. They range and go up and down a little bit, and they will certainly change. I can only give you a current snapshot of this, and we are constantly tracking this.
John, what about AP courses? You'll still?
Yeah, I'm going to touch on that in just a minute. I wanted to say in our high school priority slide on page 6, we had an opportunity to meet with our business office, our high school principals and our board leadership, and we talked about what is our priority going into next year at our high school? And how can we ensure that we have AIS opportunities in our core areas for our students? We know our students, although they may not have mandated AIS, as often is resulted from assessment results, but just needs based on the pandemic. And we are building in opportunities by making sure that we have class sizes within a good range, but also making, in our scheduling process, making AIS a priority. And we have an expectation that in our core areas, we will have multiple sections of AIS in math, science, social studies, and English. So it's certainly something that creates a learning lab-type environment, not only for students perhaps that weren't successful the previous year, but those that are challenging in their current coursework or have to perhaps make up a laboratory or prepare for a test, et cetera. So it is a shift where sometimes AIS, based on our staffing, was what's left after we schedule the kids and courses versus, no, 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 we're going to make AIS a priority and then make things fit around that. And I know that that's been a huge priority of this group. We're going to ensure that our electives are scheduled in an appropriate level to push classes into those mid-20s when appropriate and where appropriate, and have an emphasis and focus on our courses ending in Regents exams, because those are the courses that drive our graduation rates, those are the courses that drive our rankings. And make sure we have the right teachers in there and that we have competitive class sizes, if you would, in those levels. And I think, Jan, to your point, how do we preserve advanced placement opportunities for our students? So tomorrow's conversation, I'll be looking at student requests and seeing what sections are there. So we'll have conversations around if we have perhaps an AP physics class that has 12 students, is that a course we want to run? Well, are we, can we meet our other needs in science? Do we have AIS opportunities in science? Okay, if we have those things, and maybe we can have AP physics be a focus. So we're going to run the class to 12, but as counselors then build the schedule with the administration and then conflicts happen and students maybe need to find other opportunities, we make a push to push more students into that AP class and maybe draw those numbers up. If a course maybe has five or six, we might say, all right, we can offer that class, but what is a direction we can push those students into? So we go course by course and look at that. With AP being a priority, I think we're going to try to preserve and keep those AP opportunities within, you know, whatever, you know, possible. We want to make good use of our teachers when they're teaching, but, you know, 12 students to have an opportunity to take a course like AP physics is valuable in setting them up. And if we can meet our other needs- And if we can meet our other needs, then, then that's the decision and conversation that we'll be having.
Yeah, it helps them a lot when they're in, in college. They, they have credits already, you know.
We, and I will say even beyond our AP, we have an extremely comprehensive offerings that students walk away with transcripted credit, partnerships through Niagara, Syracuse, Hilbert, Duville, and not to mention our traditional AP, which is through the College Board, where students can then use their, their score on their exam. I was an AP teacher and even if you don't perhaps score three, four or five, five being the highest, and you score one or two, just that experience alone sets students up. You know, I, I took AP physics, I was a physics major. I still had to take physics in, in college, but I had a year of college level under my belt. So that, that is an example of even though maybe, you know, they wouldn't give me credit for it, regardless of my score, I still had that, that experience and prepared. So that, that's how we look at it and we take it course by course.
Some of our family started all the second semester of college, but I mean, they had so helpful, it really was.
You're absolutely right. We have students walking, coming into college with essentially a year or at, at least a semester and beyond done. And it, you either graduate early or you now can take advanced level courses, gives you the opportunity to take maybe and explore some different elective opportunities at the coll- collegiate level, so absolutely. I asked the high school principals to give their best prediction based on our current staff and, and what we're looking at for next year, to look at our class sizes in our core areas. I, I think that these numbers are good. They, they certainly will fluctuate as we build our schedules and deal with conflicts or potentially deal with how students do on the Regent's exam or coursework depending. Some of these, like I know with science, for example, that's a little low right now. I would argue nineteen is fairly low. In doing a little background on that, we have, we have a pretty impressive academy, life science academy within our science. So those are always a challenge when we have perhaps a small cohort that comes through in an academy, we're kind of bound by that commitment to run some of those courses. But we do create opportunities for students, perhaps that aren't in the academy, that might want to take a, you know, anatomy and physiology course. Yeah, we have our academy students in there that are cohort through, but we will open that up to other students that may have an interest in that. I know that's something that we have talked about a couple of years ago and making sure that we create opportunities for our students. I will tell you that our, look, using and working collaboratively, we've, we've been able to take advantage of several retirements in our district that will save us fiscally. We had seven, will have seven retirements and potentially eight positions that we will not need to fill in because of our decreased or change in enrollment and, and being efficient with our staffing. Those are positions that we're able to save and, and, you know, abolish. And still, even with doing that in our elementary level, we're able to create a full-time math AIS teacher for every elementary building in this. So those are elementary certified teachers that currently, based on adjusting our class sizes, are able to just be assigned completely and dedicated to a building for math AIS. So that coupled with our reading specialists creates an incredible opportunity for remedial support in our elementary. That is a huge success, I believe, through this process and, and worked very hard, our elementary principals worked very hard to make sure that we can make that happen. As well as ensuring that we're, we're being mindful of maybe some unknowns in the future budget. In addition, we have several other retirements that even when replaced, through some of that breakage and indifference of the step, we'll realize some savings there. And I still predict that we could potentially have additional retirements between now and the start of next fall. And each one, when that happens, we come together as a team, we review it, we examine it and determine, is that something that we need to replace? Is it fiscally responsible to do that? What will the impact be on our students and our programming? I think overall, uh, right now with the staffing process, we're able to offer a fully comprehensive program to all of our students, a variety of elective offerings and have K-12 academic intervention services and support for our students. And as well as take advantage of, of some of our retirements and reduce positions when necessary and be able to be nimble and appropriate if needs arise, potentially this summer, if enrollment changes, et cetera, that we can react and adjust and attack those needs in the district.
Jan, can I ask, you're still keeping your building subs though, correct?
Correct, so that's kind of separate. So a couple of things, yes, so the preferred building sub program.
Great program, it really is.
And, and I will tell you, Mary, that it has evolved to, we have college-level students now that have finished their coursework and we're able to bring them in as subs. Many are, are, are being approved tonight as our temporary teachers to deal with our remote, so my plan is absolutely to continue that into next year. I know we started with one at the secondary, we evolved to two, we added the elementary, we've added sometimes three or four, and they are put to use. And in the event that someone isn't out, now we have an extra teacher involved in AIS support to support supervising the building, et cetera. So it's been extremely well-received by our principals and almost an unintended consequence was having, I think it's Larry said, like a bullpen, like a, a, a team of people that we are vetting, we are seeing, they are learning how we do business and they're a lot, are potential becoming future employee, employees of ours.
And you also set up, you have two colleges you're working with, Buff State and you said Damon.
Uh, you're right, I, I reached out to the head of the department at Damon, she's doing some research on her end and will be getting back to me to hopefully partner with them in the fall. We've been working with Buff State and their deaf program. We also have a partnership with Niagara. The, the people going to the Niagara program are typically graduate students, second career people. They have a one-year, a year-to-a-new-career program and often they have to pick a school and a lot of theirs, um, program, they, they used to have a lot of students from Canada, but also they have been picking some of those schools in and around Niagara. But we share, and I work with Mrs. Prisico, we share kind of our flyer for our district. So in the event that someone wants it, so we haven't had one of their students yet, but we hope to.
How, how often is the building sub not needed as a sub?
Uh, I don't have that metric, but I would say it's pretty rare. My, my understanding is, and what we end up doing too, is we kind of have some that are dedic- each building has their own dedicated one, but then they share. So Julie Layton out of the Personnel Office, you know, she's here at 6:00 AM, so she's starting to look at the vacancies. You have some that you know about, you have some that are long-term, and then you have the, you know, someone not feeling well today and they're letting you know at 6:00 or 7:00 AM, school's starting an hour. So it is a puzzle piece, you know, and what we'll do is in the event that someone isn't assigned, so if I know you're going to be out next week Wednesday, I'll say, okay, I'll put, plug the preferred sub in there with you, you can talk to the preferred sub, set them up with your plans, we're ready to go. But kind of the last-minute call-ins, and what we'll do is in the event that a preferred building sub isn't used, let's say at Allendale, Westell has a need, okay, you have to go to Westell today.
Scott, I mean, from what I'm hearing about everything, it's got to be rare. Like, I mean, it's good to have, like, they're getting used, no matter what, they're getting used.
No matter what they're being used.
It's working having them in the bullpen.
And I could, I could probably find some of those stats or percentages, uh, you know, as we kind of close out this year.
I don't need exactly, I was just wondering in your opinion, you know, if you had said to me, oh, you know, 20% of the time they're being used in subs, I'd be like, oh, well then that's good for the AIS or whatever.
It would not, correct.
You know, which, you know, where's it benefiting more? It's benefiting more right now having them as subs, building subs actually subbing.
We have had a constant request too, is a lot of them get scooped up and then they want to backfill. So they get scooped up by a maternity leave or a long-term illness or a medical concern or the remote teachers. So when they do that, now they move into a different position with us and we, I will allow them, okay, if we can identify someone else as a preferred building sub. Right now, when colleges are ending, we just use a lot of our preferred building subs to hire as temporary remote teachers. So now, as May is approaching, we have, because of some of our partnerships and some of our student teachers even, hey, you could be preferred building sub from now to the end of the year. So as, you know, so we're backfilling them.
Yeah.
And it, it's been a, it's been a huge success and I think it's, it's, it's lowered that six, seven AM stress level for our principals, our senior clerks and our personnel office because we kind of have this group of people and we can share from each building when needed too.
Yeah, no, it sounds like it's working really well. But if a build, a preferred building sub is moved into a longer-term sub, they're no longer the preferred building sub, we then have that dedication to move that title or designation to another individual.
Correct, correct.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
And a preferred building sub, so there's a per diem sub, which, you know, we still want and if you're out there listening, you know, please contact our HR office, we could use those. But if the preferred building sub is a commitment from us to them and them to us, that they're going to be here.
Yeah, they know they're working.
Yes.
And we know we have some.
Yes.
I think what also, what it stopped is when we talked about it was, uh, other districts coming in and taking them teachers.
Correct.
And I think when we really look at it now with the year that we went through, I think it also allows some of our staff to take a maintenance day, uh, kind of really be able to take a day off, pretty, you know, everybody worked really hard during the year, you know, um, being able to have that day off to go to the doctors and not being able to reschedule things, I think it helps everybody all above.
The, the amount of quarantining, not sure if I can quarantine, I have to go to a test, I, my child might be sick, what do I do, like, over the past year and those, you know, 10 PM calls, what do I do? I may have a fe- you know, and we've been able to be err on the side of caution and safety and health and say, you know what, stay home, like, go get a test or, you know, go see your doctor and confirm that it is or isn't, we can use the preferred building sub. So if position does well, it keeps us operational and it's someone stepping in that knows the building, knows the teachers, knows the students. So it's a familiar face and it is a huge plus. And it will be interesting maybe to do a five-year analysis of how many current employees in five years were preferred building subs? Because once, I, I have found that once they get a sense of what it's like working here with our staff and in West Seneca, they want to stay here. So, and it is, to your point, um, it's going to be more and more challenging to recruit good people and we're getting an early grab on them in college, you're right out and, um, you know, it, it obviously it's a huge benefit to the employer, you kind of vet people. And sometimes people perhaps aren't meeting the standard and are, are, you know, aren't the right fit for us.
I li- I like that, that they often have a chance in for a position because you know them and, and I think it's, that's a good thing. I tell, I tell some who inquire about, you know, working in West Seneca, well, start by subbing and then we get to know them.
Get to know the main office clerks, get to know the, like, you need to be out there, so.
And see their talents or their non-talents, you know.
An interview will tell you a great deal, a sample teaching lesson, but to experience someone over a three-month period or a school year and how they react and how they can pivot and how, you know, flexible they can be.
It's a great system to do it daily.
I will also say, and I know we, and I would be happy to take as many questions, but with regards to some of our vacant positions, so I've reached out to some, um, some organizations for those with developmental disabilities. We're, we're trying to identify, a lot of those need public transportation, so what bus routes are able at what times? And I've also been contacting our BOSI's Labor Relations people to talk about the nuances of potentially looking at some of our upper-levelclassmen as students potentially working. We still have some room to go on that, how it affects civil service positions, what we have to maybe fill out with the county in the event that we do that, what are the limitations for hours? There's some also privacy concerns, temporarily, potentially too, with students, potentially cleaning teacher classrooms, et cetera, so, but we are exploring that. We're first trying to understand what are our parameters that we would have to work within, work with our CSCA, work with our county, um, and, you know, Joe and I kind of with Daryl and talking about with our principals, how do we, exactly the conversation, Mary, that you were talking about. So we'll be continuing to have that, how do we get at this need? And if it's one or two positions, it's more than what we've had before. So I just want to let you know as a follow-up, I've had a few really productive conversations, not only with some local organizations, but also, um, one of our contacts at BOSI's, just to say, you know, what do we make sure that we're going to protect ourselves and protect our students and our, and our staff in the district about different avenues that we can go.
What about our retirees? Ask, would you think we could get them to come, some of them maybe might come back for part-time cleaning?
Yeah, um.
Any avenue I'm just throwing out?
You know, we, we have done that with our retirees for teachers and, and for, for a while, we never did that. And I remember having the conversation with many of you here a couple of years ago, like that, that is, like, is there a retirement rate? Like, if you're a retiree, you get a special rate potentially to come up.
It's per diem, yes.
Per diem. So, um, you know, to explore that potentially, I will tell you, uh, I was talking to a retired head custodian the other day and pitching that exact idea, come back and sub. You can pick your days because I'm sure we'll need you to go and do that. So it is something that, you know, how can we promote? I know Jody said that she kind of shared some stuff, I sent out the help wanted, you know, how can, what can we share out, um, on our social media and continue to find ways to be creative in, in the market?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So I, I, I think there's a lot to feel good about. I think in working with Mr. Theo and Jan, I, I think we've, we've been able to make some really fiscally-minded decisions and set ourselves up very well to move into the future. So thank you.
And the kids still get their music lessons.
Yeah, so it's a lot of good stuff, a lot of work that has gone into all of this to make sure we give the students what we need. Okay, could I have a motion to accept 3A, which is to creating a certified position for a temporary elementary teacher? I'm assuming this is another virtual teacher that we need, yes, it's another virtual.
I'll move, Diane.
Okay, Mary, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Peter, and any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I would like to discuss, it's actually sixteen teachers, not one.
No, 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 this is just 3A.
Yep, 3A creates sixteen certified, uh, positions. It is sixteen 1.0 teachers, not one.
I think it's adding one, it's adding one onto the six, right?
Create?
No, no, it's, it's sixteen full-time teachers, yeah, yes.
Total, so it's one more, but, okay.
But, wait a minute, wait a minute.
What, they're full-time?
Okay, in 3A, we're creating one position. In 3B, we're approving the sixteen positions that we created last time. So this is just 3A?
3A is one of the, sixteen of them.
Oh, oh, sixteen, okay, 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 yeah.
You're creating sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
Now to the end of year.
Right, okay.
And that's reflected in me.
Yes, and that's reflected in me. Okay, can I have a motion to accept those sixteen positions?
We already voted.
And, can I vote?
Aye.
Did we already vote?
No. No, aye.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, carried six to one. And then we're appointing for those sixteen positions that I think most of them or all of them are virtual positions to make sure that the teachers that have the students in person are, you know, giving their full, um, attention to the students in front of them, and so we need some virtual teachers to do this. So can I have, actually for 3B, for the sixteen temporary teachers, and for 4A, we're appointing one teacher aide, 5A, we're appointing one teacher aide. Um, so can I, for a sub, can I have a motion to accept 3B through 5A? Okay, Mary, um, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Peter, any discussion on those?
I'd like to discuss that I will be abstaining from this vote as I do not feel it's fair to the children to change teachers on April 26th.
Okay.
So I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, part of that discussion that would be also, I just, because I was, I was talking with John, I don't want to miss anything, kind of the no vote for the previous thing. I just wanted to make sure I'm not missing anything.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
I voted no for that reason and I'm abstaining because it's not personal that I'm not.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have nothing personal over those teachers.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
Nay, I'm abstaining.
Okay, she, so we have six ayes, no-nos and one abstaining. Um, and then we have for our new business, um, we have an amendment for Mr. Beistrat's, um, contract for next year. He is graciously not taking a salary increase, he's going to have a zero increase for his salary. And can I have a motion to accept that?
I'll move.
Okay, Mary, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Peter, got a plan going here? Any discussion?
I'm also going to abstain from this vote as I do not agree with the reasoning behind this.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, and we have one abstention, so carried six to zero to one. Any other discussion before we adjourn? Nice, quick meeting tonight. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move.
Okay, Peter, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Larry, and any discussion? Okay, that's great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried seven to zero. Okay, everybody have a wonderful evening. Enjoy this nice weather, and we have our budget meeting next, next week.
Correct.
Next Tuesday, we have our budget presentation and another board meeting. Okay?
Are we on Tuesday?
Pardon?
We're just doing it every week now.
Yeah, yeah, every, every week.
I'm a big fan of every week.
Yeah, because you've got nothing else to do in this world. Yes. Okay, everybody have a wonderful night.
Go get some ice cream.